Just be, excuse me, before we get started, um, the October twenty third meeting for those minutes, do we need to, um? We can only approve those if there's enough people here to do that, right? They're at that meeting.
Yeah.
Cause I think that I was the only one there. Oh yeah, sorry. October twenty third? Um, I might be like remembering this incorrectly. I could, I could be time warping right now. Um, wasn't our last meeting at the beginning of November? That was your first one, right? Cause this is that the planning commission special meeting.
In a minute.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was right there. Uh, a little more, a little more commissioners present, me. Oh, Melissa's here. Yeah, Melissa was here so we can vote on it. Great.
Just became a light version person.
What's that?
The dark, dark mode, light mode on your phone.
Dark mode's the way to go.
I just became a light mode. In the world.
Long day for you. What did you, what did you do?
Ran a board.
Okay, let's do it. Ready, ready for record? Oh, we are recording. Um, okay, thank you. Planning Commission meeting December fourth, twenty twenty five. It's five thirty, a little after I call this meeting to order. May I please have the roll call?
Rudy Cornet?
I'm here.
Uh, Carrie Kippenich is absent. Steve Light is absent. Alyssa Alvarado?
Here.
Uh, John Grant?
Here.
Reapinya?
Here.
Excellent. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda. If everyone has reviewed the agenda, may I please have a motion to approve and a second?
I make a motion to approve the agenda. I second that.
Thank you. A motion was made to approve the agenda along with a second, all in favor of approving the agenda. Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the minutes from the October twenty third meeting. Um, may I please have a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty first meeting?
I'll second that motion. October twenty third minutes approved, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Okay, next is time for public comment. Um, there is no public here. There's no public in the Zoom meeting, so we'll move on from that. Next is a discussion item.
Good evening, Commissioners, Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. Um, we are going to take the time this evening. We have, you know, the past couple of years done a basically like a yearly recap, just to talk about what we've been doing in the planning department. I'm going to take the time here to go over building permit activities, uh, multifamily land use approvals, residential land divisions, as well as some amendments and projects that we've been working on. Uh, the purpose of this evening really is just to touch on it, um, overarching review and gather any feedback that you may have, answer any questions. It's pretty informal. This is the only thing we have on the agenda. I can't imagine it's going to take too long. So feel free, interrupt me as we go to ask the questions. I have no problem with that at all. Uh, so in this year, in April, community development staff presented some potential changes to the planning commission. These included, uh, reducing these planning commission meetings to once a month instead of twice a month. This was due to historical cancellations over really the past, over a decade, more than half of the meetings have actually been canceled due to lack of business. So it really is just an overall efficiency thing. Um, and then the other is the implement, introducing the implementation of a hearings officer. And both of these were discussed with the planning commission in April as well as city council in the same month. Um, as we started moving through the year, this really took, um, we started looking at this kind of in a two-phase approach. So this first phase, uh, amends, uh, the Dallas Municipal Code Title eleven, Chapter eleven point zero four. This is the section of the code that governs the planning commission. This basically lays out the operations of the planning commission. Uh, so changes will address, you know, attendance and quorum requirements, membership, quasi judicial responsibilities, as there's going to be a shift from overseeing the planning commission overseeing quasi judicial applications to the hearings officer. So making those changes and really general housekeeping of that codes, of that code section. Uh, so beginning in this, this next month, in January of the new year, commission meetings will be held on the first Thursday of each month. If there is a holiday, we will just move it to the next Thursday of the month. So therefore, uh, technically the first planning commission meeting in twenty twenty six would be held on January eighth because January first is a holiday. Um, this is, um, the focus here would be if, if adopted, if council approves the hearings officer. It would then have the hearings officer meetings on the third Thursday of the month. We decided to stick to this schedule here just for overall consistency, uh, for the community. So they can still rely on when those meetings are happening, when the reviews are happening, we're going to stay with the Thursday meetings, but you'll just meet once a month. And the focus will be for the planning commission, your focus is going to be on code amendments, studies, things of that nature, rather, and moving away from overall land use review.
Real quicky, um, I thought the city council did approve the hearings officer let on their.
No, no, um, it's actually, so with this two-phase approach, the first phase is, um, what was actually discussed at, um, at the meeting, at city council's meeting on November twenty fourth. So the first phase, whoo, that got really loud, um, the first phase is really the changing of the schedule, you know? So that is, we wanted to ensure that come twenty twenty six, you're starting off on a fresh foot and we just have one meeting a month. The second phase, that was approved and adopted with General Ordinance, uh, twenty five dash one four two two. That was included in your packet as exit, uh, attachment A, just to show you what those changes were of, of chapter eleven point oh four. And then phase two is really the bulk of it. Phase two is the larger change. Phase two is going, uh, was discussed at the October twenty third meeting and it's actually going to be discussed at the next planning commission meeting. This is going to be, I'll warn you, a very large packet. This is, uh, the code amendment, um, the red lines for, for the codes themselves are about a hundred and twenty pages. So it's going to be, it's, it's a really large, large, um, amendment. And this is going to include introducing the hearings officer into the system as well as some other code changes that we had. Um, rather than having a, a hearings officer focused code amendment and all these others for overall efficiency, we bundled them together. So you're going to see a lot of code amendments in there that have nothing to do with a hearings officer. For instance, some tweaks to parking standards, tweaks to landscaping standards, things of that nature. So it's kind of a modge posh of all these different things, but that will be coming and discussed at the next meeting. And our goal is the implementation of a hearings officer by April. So we will go to planning commission in December. It'll then go to city council in January. And then following that, there will be a process where we go through the interview process for the hearings officer to have that in place by April. In that period of time, wherever there's going to be a gap where we haven't hired a hearings officer yet, the planning commission, in the event we have an application in, the planning commission will still have the authority to oversee and approve those applications. But once a hearing officer is hired, you're off the hook and you're just going to be working on those long range visioning types of projects.
So December eighteenth.
December eighteen, yep. At the next meeting, we'll be discussing this, that, um, it will be, um, the consideration of rec, uh, the consideration of those code amendments for your recommendation to city council. Uh, so jumping into, um, residential building, uh, residential development activity, um, we provided some information here that I think is helpful to, to oversee where we're at, where our numbers are. I mean, twenty twenty five, we had a total of thirty four new residential dwelling units through twenty six permits. Um, this included twenty single family homes, three duplexes, two replacement units and zero ADUs. I just wanted to point that, that aspect out. I think there has been a, a shift now where we allow for detached duplexes. And detached duplexes, it's basically, it's, you can build the design just like a single family home. You're not restricted to sizes like you are with ADUs. And when it comes to SDCs, there's only a couple thousand dollar difference between it. So you get far more flexibility by doing a detached duplex. So that may have contributed to why we are not seeing, uh, the number of ADUs that we might expect with, with those, um, typically cheaper, uh, models of dwellings. Um, replacement units, um, replacement units, we, we include in here, replacement units are really when we, you're replacing a damaged or destroyed home. Um, we all know that manufactured homes, the older ones definitely have a shelf life. So we do see those replaced every once in a while. Um, we like to include this in here just to show the permits that have been approved. But when we look at the overall increase of our housing inventory, we always take those, uh, replacement units and subtract them from our total, just to give you, uh, that total amount. So in, in total, um, thirty two new units were approved this last year. Um, compared to la- last year, we, there was thirteen, so we saw quite a big jump. And, you know, after looking through these numbers, I, I was working with Crystal, I was, I was doubting her a little bit on the numbers because it was, it was a shock for us. It was great. You know, last year, I think we were, um, the thirteen was pretty low, so it was exciting to see that the numbers are moving up. Um, especially in the, um, financial, um, environment that we are in, moving some projects forward. Um, so we've provided here on page, um, twenty two of your packet, just kind of a bar graph, you know, or a line graph. It just shows the numbers over the past few years. Um, and then there's a dashed line in there that kind of shows what we're going to continue to show every year when we do this. That's the line. That's kind of our standard. That's what was included in the housing needs analysis. Housing needs analysis says that we basically need to build twenty six units a year to keep up with population. So last year, of course, and the year before, we did not make that, but of course we did this year. So we saw a significant increase from, from last year to this year. Uh, so looking at next is a multifamily development approvals. Um, so with a multifamily development, a multifamily development, the first stop is a land use application. So it's considered, it's a site plan review application. So before you get a building permit for a multifamily, you're going through land use approval. And then what's, I'm familiar with the team here is this, um, group oversaw the, you know, some appeals for the Basalt Commons project. So something to keep in mind there, the Basalt Commons has made it all the way through land use, but they're still, they haven't made it all the way through the building permit process. So we like to keep, we like to point that out because it's like, we can't actually say that those new units have made it through building permits. So when you're looking at overall statistics of numbers that were improved, we like to always call that out and show the difference that when we say new units that are approved. We're, we're specifically talking about when a building permit is approved through the city. So something to keep in mind there. Uh, in twenty twenty five, um, the city approved one land use application for a new multifamily housing development, with this was seventy six units at, uh, eight one six Channel with Loop Road. So this was a project that was in partnership with the local housing authority. Um, building permits have yet to be submitted, um, but the, they've, our, their team has let us know that they are intending on submitting the building permit for that in January. And they do have funding secured for that project. So that's exciting to hear. Um, notably, one thing for us to point out is that there have been no multifamily developments that have been constructed in the city since twenty nineteen. So that is really where we are missing out. Um, however, there is a six unit multifamily that is currently be built on the west side of town, about ninth and, uh, Walnut Street. So, um, good news there as far as multifamily developments are concerned. So taking a look at residential land divisions, uh, residential land divisions are, um, this activity here is the, um, it includes partitions, subdivisions and middle housing land divisions. Um, just for some overall terminology here, whenever we're talking about, um, lots and parcels, I wanted to be specific there. We always use the term, it's probably the most widely used term of a lot. Everybody references that as a lot. But in here, wanted to point out that when we talk about a lot, a lot is when it's referring to the subdivision process and a parcel is referring to a partition process. So just some clarity there on some terminology. Uh, when totaling, um, whenever we total new land units, this is another specific thing here. The original property is always excluded from that calculation because, um, you know, for example, when you have a six unit development, it counts as five new units of land. Because you have that original parent parcel that is being divided up. So just to kind of get in the weeds there for you with where these numbers and how these numbers line up with that. So this last year, the city approved, um, we had a couple typos here and, and, uh, am I bad on these? Um, the, not here, actually the next line, I'll get to that. So in, in twenty twenty five, the city approved two minor partitions, which created three additional parcels. There was two subdivisions, which created fifty six additional lots. And we processed our first middle housing land division application, which created five additional lots. So a total of, uh, sixty four new units of land were created, uh, for future development. But thing to point out here is this, these do not reflect, similar to the building permit numbers we're talking about, these do not reflect final recordings. So there is a lot that goes into a subdivision to finally get a subdivision recorded. Sometimes it takes two to three years because you have to put in all the infrastructure before the final plat is recorded. So these numbers here specifically show the numbers that were approved, but they are not potentially legal lots yet because they still have some, um, steps to. I think there has been a shift now where we allow for detached duplexes. And detached duplexes, it's basically it's you can build the design just like a single family home. You're not restricted to sizes like you are with ADUs. And when it comes to SDCs, there's only a couple thousand dollar difference between it. So you get far more flexibility by doing a detached duplex. So that may have contributed to why we are not seeing the number of ADUs that we might expect with with those typically cheaper models of dwellings. Replacement units. Replacement units, we want, we include in here, replacement units are really when we, you're replacing a damaged or destroyed home. We all know that manufactured homes, the older ones definitely have a shelf life. So we do see those replaced every once in a while. We like to include this in here just to show the permits that have been approved. But when we look at the overall increase of our housing inventory, we always take those replacement units and subtract them from our total just to give you that total amount. So in in total, 32 new units were approved this last year. Compared to last year, we, there was 13. So we saw quite a big jump. You know, after looking through these numbers, I, I was working with Crystal. I was, I was doubting her a little bit on the numbers because it was, it was a shock for us. It was great, you know, last year, I think we were, the 13 was pretty low. So it was exciting to see that the numbers are moving up, especially in the financial environment that we are in, moving some projects forward. So we've provided here on page 22 of your packet, just kind of a bar graph, you know, or a line graph. It just shows the numbers over the past few years. And then there's a dashed line in there that kind of shows what we're going to continue to show every year when we do this. That's the line, that's kind of our standard. That's what was included in the housing needs analysis. Housing needs analysis says that we basically need to build 26 units a year to keep up with population. So last year, of course, and the year before, we did not make that. But of course we did this year. So we saw a significant increase from from last year to this year. So looking at next is a multifamily development approvals. So with a multifamily development, a multifamily development, the first stop is a land use application. So it's considered, it's a site plan review application. So before you get a building permit for a multifamily, you're going through land use approval. And then what's familiar with the team here is this group oversaw the, you know, some appeals for the Basalt Commons project. So something to keep in mind there, the Basalt Commons has made it all the way through land use. But they're still, they haven't made it all the way through the building permit process. So we like to keep, we like to point that out because it's like, we can't actually say that those new units have made it through building permits. So when you're looking at overall statistics of numbers that were improved, we like to always call that out and show the difference that when we say new units that are approved, we're, we're specifically talking about when a building permit is approved through the city. So something to keep in mind there. In 2025, the city approved one land use application for a new multifamily housing development. With this was 76 units at 816 Chana with Loop Road. So this was a project that was in partnership with the local housing authority. Building permits have yet to be submitted. But they've, their team has let us know that they are intending on submitting the building permit for that in January. And they do have funding secured for that project. So that's exciting to hear. Notably, one thing for us to point out is that there have been no multifamily developments that have been constructed in the city since 2019. So that is really where we are missing out. However, there is a six unit multifamily that is currently be built on the west side of town, about ninth and Walnut Street. So good news there as far as multifamily developments are concerned. So taking a look at residential land divisions, residential land divisions are this activity here is the, it includes partitions, subdivisions and middle housing land divisions. Just for some overall terminology here, whenever we're talking about lots and parcels, I wanted to be specific there. We always use the term, it's probably the most widely used term of a lot. Everybody references that as a lot, but in here, wanted to point out that when we talk about a lot, a lot is when it's referring to the subdivision process and a parcel is referring to a partition process. So just some clarity there on some terminology. When totaling, whenever we total new land units, this is another specific thing here. The original property is always excluded from that calculation because, you know, for example, when you have a six unit development, it counts as five new units of land because you have that original parent parcel that is being divided up. So just to kind of get in the weeds there for you with where these numbers and how these numbers line up with that. So this last year, the city approved, we had a couple typos here and my bad on these. The, not here, actually the next line, I'll get to that. So in 2025, the city approved two minor partitions, which created three additional parcels. There was two subdivisions which created 56 additional lots. And we processed our first middle housing land division application, which created five additional lots. So a total of 64 new units of land were created for future development. But thing to point out here is this, these do not reflect, similar to the building permit numbers we're talking about, these do not reflect final recordings. So there is a lot that goes into a subdivision to finally get a subdivision recorded. Sometimes it takes two to three years because you have to put in all the infrastructure before the final plat is recorded. So these numbers here specifically show the numbers that were approved, but they are not potentially legal lots yet because they still have some steps to go through. The middle housing land division, that's something to point out here. Middle housing land division, we would, we're going to be considering, well, we'll be at at some point moving this into our code. It's currently not in our code, but we were able to process it because it's a process that the state outlines. And it's specific when you are building middle housing. In this case, the middle housing land division was a six, a six unit townhouse. So we went through a middle housing land division process. It's technically a subdivision, but there's a special carve out in state law that allowed us to do it. And we were able to take it through that path instead of needing to comply with our code specifically.
I'm sorry, where is this?
This is over on East Ninth Street, so over by, what is it, Hecker Park? Right where ninth and 10th come together. So there used to be in that area, there was a house for the longest time that was actually sitting in the middle of the road. So for years, yeah, the city, the city went through a process over years and years. They finally removed that house and then now they're installing all new utilities back into that area. So there's actually, that's where that that project is. So for our numbers here in comparison, this is the one correction I do want to make. By comparison, 2024 approvals included not two, but nine mine part, nine minor partitions. And and there was a total last year, 26 units of land that was approved. So we have seen, we did see an increase in the total units of land that was approved this year as well. So that's the data that we have for, you know, residential development numbers. And the next section here really talks about our department projects, different projects that we've been working on. So if you really want to look at things and I think this goes back to the conversation that we had about these, these key changes that we talked about earlier this year, where we're implementing a hearings officer. Hearings officer is going to handle your land use applications, which can be categorized as current planning. And then the planning commission is now going to focus on projects, amendments, which is categorized as long range planning. So we're finally going to see like a shift and really kind of splitting our, our department a bit and having more of a focus on each of those instead of kind of bundling them all together. So the second half of this presentation here is talking about the different projects that we'll be working on. Long range, like the name, they don't, there's very few times that there's specific projects in long range planning. We did see a very specific timeline this last year and that was with the FEMA updates. And I'll get to that in a little bit here. Also, some completed projects to note, the housing production strategy was adopted. Thank you for everyone that was involved in that. This was adopted by city council, January 2025, and it was formally accepted by the Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCD, in June 2025. This outlines 19 strategies over the next eight years that the city will actively be implementing. You'll be seeing many of those projects in that period of time as we move them forward. The downtown parking management strategy and action plan. This was initiated in spring 2024, it was adopted in March 2025. And it addressed, you know, some emerging parking challenges to recent developments, proposals, as well as projects that are actually happening in our downtown. We wanted to get a real accurate account of what's going on with our parking numbers downtown. Ultimately, it came out that we, we have the supply of parking in our downtown area, our parking system. When you're looking at overall vacancy, our parking system is very, very low. So there is what that means for us, there is room for that development, the revitalization downtown. The FEMA pre-implementation compliance measures, pick them. This was probably one of the more difficult decisions our planning commission had to, was faced with this with this year. This was a process where we updated the flood control provisions. These were adopted in July 2025, ahead of FEMA's mandated timeline. And this was a timeline that basically all cities or I think it was, yeah, over 200 communities in Oregon were required to make these updates. Or they run the risk of losing flood insurance as being part of the flood insurance program. So there were changes that we effectively adopted the model code, which is a code that FEMA had laid out. And it's a code that all communities could effectively adopt. We made some tweaks to that and did, this now is in place, it took effect August 1st. And we really, what it was is we completely redid our flood code standards. It's entirely brand new from what it was one year ago. In the period of time, we've had one application reviewed under these new regulations. We also created a more robust guide online. We have a landing page for all things floodplain on the city's website now. So hopefully it'll be a great resource as people look at developing in the floodplain going forward. So some ongoing projects. What I touched on here a little bit ago was like the phase two of our, of our hearings officer implementation. So I won't get into it as much because we've already discussed it and we discussed it at the October 23rd meeting. So that is the project that is really coming up next. And it's happening at the next meeting where we're going to be discussing it. And that'll be the implementation process of the hearings officer. Next project is the economic opportunities analysis. We had a joint session on this in August. This is a project that began earlier this year. We initiated an update to our economic opportunities analysis and buildable lands inventory. And this is also going to include amendments to goal nine of the comprehensive plan. The city last completed an economic opportunities analysis in 2006. So there's some very outdated information. While substantial work occurred in 2019 and 2020, it actually ended up never moving forward. It was never adopted. So there was, there was a brief pause there for a while and then we picked up the work again. And as I mentioned, there was a joint session in August to discuss that between planning commission and city council. They provided some direction. We then followed with providing materials to DLCD for an informal review, suggestions, recommendations, which generated some additional feedback and recommended revisions. Our team is working on that now with our consultant and we will be bringing it forward sometime in the first quarter of 2026. But I think it's probably going to be landing in February. So that'll be another upcoming planning commission that'll be in front of you in February. The next is a Wasco County flood insurance rate map. I feel like a broken record talking about this one because I think it's been on every update that we've had for the past three years. This is an update that FEMA started in 2014 and we're still not there. They, this is going to be the actual, what I talked about earlier was the flood code provisions, the, the code itself that was updated. These are the maps that we use to determine if someone is actually in a floodplain. So these maps are being worked on. We had some initial, we notified property owners that were impacted by these changes back in 2023. There was additional, from the feedback that we received, it resulted in some additional revisions to these maps. Then there was a bit of a pause, the re-engineering happened and then the government shutdown happened and it was just delay after delay. And then just this Tuesday, we received an email said that this is back on and we're going to start the new appeal process. So we're going to be preparing, our team's going to be preparing in the next week or two to notify neighbors again, there's another 90 day appeal. This is specific to properties that are located on Mill and Chana with Creeks. All other engineering and modeling that had been done, there'll be no additional changes there. So this is a very targeted notification. And hopefully, I think they say within six months, we might be able to have new maps adopted. But I think it's, it's always kind of a waiting game on this project here.
So just real quick, what exactly, after of new Wasco County flood insurance rate maps is, are the flood insurance areas decreasing, increasing, or do we have no idea?
So it's a mix. It's a real mix in Lone Pine. Because of the, so the maps that we use are from 1984. And the technology from 1984 isn't what it was, what it is now, right? In Lone Pine, Lone Pine's development out there, I think in 1984, it was probably still a driving range or a golf course or something. I can't remember what Lone Pine was back then. But in the, in that period of time, the South, specifically the South Shore development occurred. And when those subdivisions occurred, they brought in fill, right? To, to raise all the land up to, to be outside of the floodplain. Well, that fill isn't, doesn't show on all the maps and it didn't update the maps themselves. So in Lone Pine, we're actually probably going to start seeing some more and more properties coming out of the floodplain with this, with the new modeling. But there's other areas in town that are, are going to be impacted by this. And the Chana with Creek and Mill Creek are, are two that we're going to see some changes for a lot of properties that weren't in the floodplain are now going to be in the floodplain. I think, you know, in those two areas, there's not as much of an impact of maybe like, you know, man-made impacts of inclusion or exclusion in those cases. I think it's just, it's accurately showing what we saw effectively in 96. I mean, the flood downtown in 96, it flooded, it, you know, flooded pretty substantial portions of our downtown area. Now, when you look at these new maps, there's areas of downtown that are now in the floodplain. So I think it actually accurately reflects what is out there. We have our public works department has had some discussions, some initial discussions with Department of Core, you know, the core on this. And one thing that we do know is that the pipe, the Mill Creek tunnel is, is undersized for the amount of flow that can happen in a normal flood. So what happened in 96 is the pipes is small and then you had all the obstruction. So it made it that much worse. What these maps show, these maps just show in like a perfect flood, which is, you know, never a correct thing to, to describe a flood. But it's effectively, they're modeling just water, they're not modeling any obstructions or debris whatsoever. So what has been helpful with these flood map updates is we were able to get the modeling and from FEMA's engineers. So in the future, we may be able to, to proceed with some, you know, hopefully federal assistance about evaluating the, the size of those pipe, that, that tunnel more and hopefully, hopefully increasing it or whatever the case may be.
Question, and so Mill Creek, because of the creek racing, right? Because 96 does what happened?
Yeah.
Right? Not because the river is going to come up and it's because of the milk creek.
Yeah, it is, yeah, because you know, the, the maps in 84 really didn't give the accurate, you know, it wasn't an accurate depiction of what is actually out there. And it didn't really, I don't know if it took into account the size of the pipe as much, you know, as it should have. So what this, this new modeling does is it shows, I mean, you have effectively a massive body of water coming into a pinch point. So where's it going to go? It's just going to push out, right? So these, this new map accurately reflects that. So next is some, some work on some downtown projects. Staff continue to support the urban renewal agency. And the decades old First Street streetscape project, which is going, you know, tentative construction award is scheduled for this, well, it's not tentative anymore. We are moving forward with that, I know, consideration to council for the contract award for that project here on Monday. This is a project that has been in the works. I thought it was about 20 years, but additional research that we have is probably pushing about 25 years in the works to reconstruct First Street between Union and Laughlin Streets. The scope includes full replacement of sidewalks, full replacement of the retaining walls that are down there. There's some streetscaping elements added, parking is shifting from one side to the next. There's going to be a bike lane out there and there's also going to be some interpretive elements that are laid out through the site for some historic mitigation purposes. The site, the First Street itself is located in four known archaeological zones. So it's a, it's a very complex project, but we're finally at the point where we are moving forward with, with a contract. So construction there is set to begin in early 2026. And then staff has also been assisting with the federal street plaza. And those two, construction is going to be happening on those two really at the same time. So there's going to be a lot of, a lot of construction and a lot of, you know, great projects happening here in the next two years in our downtown area. More information on the impacts of those two construction projects can be found on the city's website. We had a informational meeting, what was it, October 30th, I believe? So what that meeting was focused on mostly was just the impacts to, to parking and, and, and traffic. So there's some great material on there on the city's website. If you have any questions, you know, don't hesitate to reach out.
I do have a question. First street is where, when Cherry Festival is, that's where, so that's going to impact Cherry Festival.
Yeah, so Cherry Fest is moving for the next two years. Yeah, so they, I think, last I heard, it was still going to be shifting somewhere into the downtown area. I do not know at this point where exactly it's going to be, but yeah, it'll be a huge impact to that. Cause the goal with it is we will be closing First Street for the entire project. So First Street potentially could be closed for about 18 months. Some other projects we're working on, there's a really a bundle of them. You know, after we adopted the housing production strategy, now it's time to implement the housing production strategy. As I talked about, there's 19 strategies to work on over the next eight years. Staff is currently in the process of working on really, you know, researching and, you know, getting into the weeds of all these different projects. These include, you know, researching a multi-unit property tax exemption program that will help and hopefully incentivize affordable, multi-unit and accessible housing. SASS is also exploring the implementation of pre-approved or pre-built dwelling plans. So this is a program that the state has been pushing for a while. The City of Eugene is a great program that we've kind of been modeling off of and talking with them about. This is the idea that there are plans readily available on the city's website for, for, to download. And then the goal there would be, you know, reducing the barriers for, you know, purchasing sets of plans and things like that. We are also hopefully going to be partnering with the City of Hood River on this project, the pre-approved plan, as well as the University of Oregon. We're, we're looking into some potential partnerships with University of Oregon on that as well. Also, we are going to be looking at this, this next year, going to be working on some, some housing code amendments that are going to address, you know, middle housing. So looking into triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, refining our code, trying to, to streamline the process for all of those. Some considerations that we have that were laid out in the housing production strategy is expanding those use types into the low density zone. Currently, the low density zone, that is where the bulk of our available land is. But it's restricted to single family and duplex. So expanding those to triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, that's the focus. The other focus with it, not only expanding those use types into those zones, the focus would be taking a look at making it so that triplexes and quadplexes at least, these are some of our initial thoughts are to be processed just as building permits instead of going through the land use process for those. So hopefully review it, you know, removing one additional step and one additional barrier to all of this. Some upcoming projects that we have. The West Side Renaissance Master Plan, we've talked about that probably before. I think we may have brought it up. So the city received. Um, I think we may have brought it up. So the city received a, a grant that we had tried last year. Uh, we were unsuccessful. We were awarded this year and this is funded through a transportation and growth management grant with ODOT and DLCD. And it's, uh, the goal is to develop an integrated land use and transportation strategy for the west side of the DOWs. Um, it will address, you know, fragmented streets, limited sidewalks, bike lanes, um, constrained access to schools, housing, health services and transit. It's a very large project. It's, um, going to be lasting, um, I think initial estimates are probably 18 months to two years, pretty big project. Um, we've only started the initial phasing of that. So, um, there's not a lot more than what I've kind of described here. But, you know, the goal is to try to get, you know, more of this, this comprehensive look into the west side of the DOWs.
How much is that grant? How much was awarded?
At this point, we can actually not share that information. Yeah. So, um, it was a decent amount. Yeah. But it's, um, for the fact that it goes into, there's a potential RFP process that we have to go into. So there's some, um, we've, we've been told by ODOT, ODOT to not share the actual amount. Um, the next is a development review audit. This is another grant that we received through DLCD and the Housing Accountability and Production Office. This is set to begin, um, early this next year. I actually have a scoping meeting with the assigned consultant there just this next week. And this is really like in under the hood project. This is a project that's going to be improving our processes. Not so much the code. There's probably going to be some code updates that come out of it. But the goal behind it is streamline, streamlining the permitting process. Um, trying to get away from this one size fits all site plan review that we have. Currently we have a site plan review land use process that covers everything from a food cart to 116 unit multifamily development to a 90 acre data center. And it's all one application. So it seems like we're, we're taking a look to see what the workflows are for separating those out and making, you know, potentially looking at a tiered system for site plan reviews. Um, there's also some, you know, like, yeah, like I was mentioning, updating our review procedures, um, any recommended code and, uh, ordinance refinements, any suggestions on any technology needs, roadmaps for staff. So really what it is, is it's, we're trying to not only improve the customer experience, but improve staff's experience. And, um, you know, less of a process for the customer is less of a process for us as well. Um, so yeah, as I mentioned, that'll start here, um, very soon. And that is probably going to be, I'm thinking that's probably going to be like a half a year type of program. I know city of Astoria is working on one right now. And I've kind of been coordinating with them on a couple, some questions that I've had. And they had, they looked at, they targeted like a four to six month type of thing. So I imagine there will be code amendments that come out of that as well. Um, so this is really, you know, a list of, of what we really have, um, kind of on the, on the front end of things, the, the front burner. I think there's a lot of things on the back burner that we've touched on different times in, in some of these reviews. And it really just kind of gives you, you know, an idea of the, the whole wrong, long range work that we have going on. As I mentioned, I, I appreciate, we, we welcome the commission's insights and further discussion. I think you've all kind of asked, asked questions as we've gone. I'm happy to, to touch on those anymore. But, you know, I just also want to thank everybody for their, their dedication and expertise as part of the planning commission, as well as thank the, the community development staff for the hard work that they've, that they've done over this last year. And, um, with that, I am happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Yeah, I do have a question. So the Sixth Street, um, work that was just done and it took forever. Is that part of that grant?
It's not. Nope. That's entirely different. Yeah. So this is part, that's, uh, the, the Sixth Street widening project. That's through another grant. I think that's a, I'd have to check. I mean, I'm, I'm wondering if the city attorney knows, but I think it was a, a grant potentially that was in partnership with ODOT, um, but it's entirely a public works project. So.
Great. By the way, that was annoying.
Oh, what was the question?
Hi Jonathan. Um, question was, was the Sixth Street widening project, um, partially assisted by ODOT funds?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
I don't know with certainty. Um, I, I can find out tomorrow and I will email the commission if it was, but I think, I don't, I don't think that it was.
Okay.
If you don't get an email from me, then it wasn't.
When you talk about the West Side Renaissance Plan, where does West Side start?
So our original, that's all going to be part of our scoping to really like fine tune it. Our original map, um, was, so this is, there's a little bit of a legacy in this Renaissance program. My two, two directors ago, actually on his way out the door of retiring Steve Harris, he received the award. Um, and it was awarded to the city, but you know, due to some, some complications internally, we had to actually send, send the award back. So we then didn't work on it for a while. And then, um, it came up, like I said, we tried it again last year. Um, Wasco County received the award and, and the city of Lapine did. And we were unsuccessful. And then this time around, we, we, we got it. Um, so the original, to your point, it was basically, if you could draw a line, it's not a straight line, but if you could effectively go down cherry heights, kind of cherry heights, cutting down to the river-ish was kind of the boundary that we used. It went all the way, it goes all the way out, even outside the urban growth boundary. Um, it includes the county's, um, purchase, the county's land that they purchased, like was 159, 154 acres over on the opposite side of Chenoweth Creek, as well as goes into a little bit of Murray's addition. Which Murray's addition, yeah, you know, outside the urban growth boundary, not within our jurisdiction, but it was included within that overall plan. And then of course, yeah, the entire industrial area. So as we refine it some more, um, we're going to see that area probably tightened up a little bit. Some initial conversations is potentially scoping out the industrial area and having more of, I think there's been more of leaning towards this focus of more residential focus on that side, but, um, more to come, more to come. What we have been told is that, um, it is the TGM program. It's, you know, we're grateful for it, but it's with everything that's been going on at ODOT, it's slow. Uh, Wasco County received the award. So we met with the project coordinator, I don't know, probably two months ago. And they informed us that Wasco County's award, they hadn't even started it. And, you know, here it was 10 months after they received the award, nine to 10 months after. Hopefully we're not going to be in the same, same boat. But we, you know, that project coordinator, our current project manager at ODOT is also retiring. So there's going to be, there's going to be some delays, but we're going to do our best to, to move it forward when we can. Anything else?
Well, thank you. We're excited. I'm excited. Staff comments, project updates. I think that's included in what we all just discussed. Uh, and I think that commissioner comments or questions is also included in just what we just kind of wrapped up. Does, does everyone agree?
Yeah, I could just say, um, we have, we will have one appointment, a new planning commissioner. Nick, Nick Portella has stepped down from the planning commission. Um, so we are working towards an appointment potentially at the, the sec, I think it's going to be the second city council meeting. Uh, the mayor has recommended an appointment of an individual who was actually part of our local government's academy. And then sat on to the budget committee. So, you know, it's another, you know, it's a nod to the local government's academy at the end of, you know, whenever you complete the local government's academy, there's always a survey at the end or just, you know, a couple of questions to answer. And it's always asking, um, what boards and commissions are you interested in? And this individual happened to, to check the box for budget and planning commission. So, you know, we'll be happy to have a board and, uh, come, yeah, this, you know, when we meet up again in 2026, you'll, you have your opportunity to meet him.
Was, uh, um, him part of this last, um, last or the one before?
The one before. Yep.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Meeting adjourned.